Immediately after the access drive is completed per the approved plan and prior removal of topsoil of phase one. No more than two phases may be open at one time. Due to the open nature of site and the potential for high winds, it is strongly suggested that phases be reclaimed as the excavation progresses across the phase to reduce wind erosion. An asphalt is required for each phase within 90 days of reclaiming the phase. The asphalt shall show limits of excavated area, grades of final excavation, and finished slopes. The special permit and mylar's are to be recorded in the town clerk's office prior to receiving a zoning permit. Engineering review fees to be determined are to be paid prior to filing the mylar's or within 30 days of billing, whichever comes first. The performance bond, $174,000, is to be submitted prior to receiving a zoning permit to begin excavation. I would also add that modified hours Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., no weekends. And we usually say no holidays as well. So I would just add that.
And the equipment maintenance off hours.
And then only equipment, maintenance off hours. Now ordinarily, special permits, five-year period?
The study plan is saying in the gravel regulations, our earth excavation regulations allow for five years max.
Okay, so the board does have the ability to have a shortened permit period if you wanted to bring the applicant back prior to that five-year mark. So is there anyone on the board interested?
Yeah, or we, whatever they just put in there.
So that is the plan, but the permit can allow up to five years?
I think we should allow three.
Okay.
Check that.
All right, so three-year permit. So the term would be a three-year permit, since that was the approximate base. Any other items?
I've got a comment. I'm, I guess, concerned that, you know, this is prime farmland, and it's not just prime farmland. This is like signature farmland. This is why Plainfield is called Plainfield. And it's like one of the last places like this left in town. And, you know, maybe they can go in there, dig out the gravel, and put the topsoil back, and everything will be fine, but, I mean, for 67,000 cubic yards of gravel, there's lots of gravel in town still. It's not like this is the last place we have any. I just think it's an inappropriate use of a valuable division resource.
Thank you for your comment. And just, this is the challenge of zoning, right? So it's our job to balance not only the short-term use of the property owners and businesses, but to also balance long-term. So long-term, short-term, residents first business, and this is the challenge of planning and zoning.
Just to point out, it has been stated that the reason they need to do this is to pay the taxes.
Sure.
If you can't pay the taxes, what happens?
Correct. So many factors for consideration. The conditions have been written. If there's a member who wants to motion for approval of the application, include the suggested conditions. Motions are made in the affirmative so that a yes vote means yes and a no vote means no. So if there's a member who is not in support of approval, I would still suggest that the motion be made in the approval and affirmative so that a yes vote is for and a no vote is against. So just procedural-wise. But it does not, if you make a motion, it does not lock you into voting that way. Okay, I'll make the motion. Do I, I have to read this something? Nope, you can just say, "Conditions as read" into the record.
I'll make the motion to accept, approve this.
Application.
Application with the conditions as read.
Okay, I have a motion to approve with the conditions as read. Do I have a second? I have a second by Kevin. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Kevin, I'm gonna do a roll call vote, just to clarify what the vote was. So when I say your name, if you could just say yea or nay for the record so we can have it clearly since it is a split vote. And your vote, Kevin?
Yeah.
June?
Nay.
John?
Nay.
Carla, yea?
Yea.
All right, so let the record show that the application is approved with a three and the affirmative two in opposition. Application is approved. Moving on to item D. Scannell Properties, number 639 LLC, Carol Daniel Madrigal, requesting site plan approval to construct a 1 million square foot warehouse with 975 parking spaces, associated drives, parking areas, drainage, et cetera, on property located at 91, 105, 107, 113, 143 to 151, Plainfield Pike Road, industrial two district, continued from last month. We're gonna take a five-minute recess so the applicant can set up and members can stretch their legs. Thank you. Okay, and the commission is back from recess. So our item D, Scannell Properties, and we have speaking for the applicant?
Thank you, everyone. For the record, my name is Matthew Bruton. I'm an engineer from Beale Companies. We are headquartered at 335 Research Parkway in Connecticut. I'll give you kind of a quick recap of the project and what's changed since we were here last time. I have my colleague with me here, Kai Pablo, our traffic engineer, and members of the applicant as well, any questions they have. So just a quick recap. Up on the screen here is a historical aerial in the subject area. It's from September of 2006. Obviously, there's a little bit of developments, mostly trees and some cleared areas on the parcel. Moving forward to current aerial from September of 2020, you can see further development along Plainfield Pike Road. Obviously, further development of the gravel area to the rear. I'm going to have the laser in this area here. Up on the screen, obviously, is an existing condition plan. Just as a quick reminder, it's approximately 137 acres. This is combined of several lots to accomplish this. The majority of the lot is vacant, but there is, as we discussed before, an existing concretions quarry operating the site. For orientation, all the slides will show Plainfield Pike Road to the left-hand side. Up on the screen now is the proposed site plan. As mentioned right by the chair over here, 1 million square foot warehouse, industrial building, approximately 975 car parking spaces and 200 dock doors, approximately 186 trailer storage spaces as well. Building has been set up and designed to accommodate up to two tenants. Unknown at this time who will be occupying this building. Just a reminder as well that we are not seeking any variances. This is allowed by site plan approval, and we have gone through the landlord's approval prior to coming to this point here. Another reminder that we discussed last time, there is a lot line modification as part of this process. We're gonna be combining several lots to form this greater lot for the proposed warehouse. And the lot you see here outlined in red will be the lot that will remain to house the concrete batch plant that is to stay on the property. Just to point out that this concrete batch plant will have its own dedicated driveway that exists today, and the proposed, well, obviously, have two proposed driveways that we'll get into more detail as we move further along. Both these lots do conform to your zoning regulations. So stormwater ready and drainage. Obviously, we're improving the site and including a lot of previous areas as part of the development of the warehouse and the subsequent associated pavement areas. As a reminder, we've, you know, designed this to be in compliance with town regulations and also 2004 ed. Stormwater Quality Manual and 2002 erosion segmentation control guidelines as well. So we're obviously doing that. This is vetted quite heavily by our inland weapons or town staff and your peer review engineer, which I'm sure you'll hear from tonight. One change that was requested as part of this that I'd like to point out is we did have a discharge point to the western side of the parcel, I'll highlight it here in a second, that goes down towards, you know, the concrete batch solar field side of the water. So just highlight here with the laser pointer, you can see here. Previously, we had this discharge line coming straight down closer to the solar field development. And with discussions with town staff and your peer review engineer, the goal was to relocate this to be more advantageous to continue to discharge in a responsible way, but also maybe not put a burden on a potential future development downhill from the water. So that's a, that's a change that we made since we were last here. Wanted to point that out to you guys. Another question and a bit of discussion that came up from the hearing last time was circulation and traffic related to the potential development. So wanted to make sure we clarify this for the commission and certain questions you guys may have. So kind of broken the slide down into three different parts. So wanted to be very clear what we're asking you guys to review and approve here. So driveways, we're looking to permit two driveways, full access on Plainfield Pike. The intention is for both driveways to be used by trucks and passenger vehicles. Tenants, clarifying again, just they're unknown at this time. The building has been accommodated to, you know, be used by one user, but could be used by two. And both driveways are intended to be used for trucks and cars, whether it's one tenant or two tenants. And then permitting. You guys are probably used to normal seeing DOT permitting in the form of an encroachment permit, which is usually required when it's, when you're connecting to a state-controlled road. This application is usually leaving because it's considered a major traffic generator. So the state of Connecticut regulates any building over 100,000 square feet or over 200 parking spaces as a major traffic generator. So before you're allowed to apply for an encroachment permit framework in that right of way, you need to get approval through OSTA. Technically, you're not allowed to submit to OSTA until we have local approval. We'd like to push the boundaries a little bit. So that application is in front of them, it's under review. They have provided us one round of comments to date, which we are working through. We hope to get their approval after we have local approval from you guys. Once that is secured, then we can move to the next step, which is the encroachment permit, which is the actual connection to the road in terms of, you know, construction of the driveways and any possible utility connections that we do have in Plainfield Pike. So unfortunately, you guys did the first step, OSTA's second, and then encroachment permit is the final step. We are overlapping with local and the benefit of OSTA at the moment. So just to give you guys a visual of the circulation that I just described, so I have two different visuals right here. This one on the screen here is vehicle circulation strictly for cars, and this is for the worst-case scenario, two tenants. So as you can see, I have delineated in the green paths for cars to enter the site from the driveway to the east or the west and enter the parking lot in the front. So you can see here, so that cars can use either entrance and access this front parking lot. If there were two tenants, that area would be designated in the rear as tenant number two. For passenger vehicles to get to this area, they would follow the red line here, which circumvents the truck port, that to safely access the parking lot in the rear. The second graphic here is strictly for trucks. As I mentioned, we want truck access for both driveways to be able to access either side of the building. So you can see here, the two different delineated colors, purple, orange, show the two different access points to trucks to get onto the eastern side or the western side of the building, which will allow them to access the docks that we have opposed. I'll pass this to Pat for a recap of the traffic, and then I'll take it back.
For the record, my name is Pat Pablo, and I am a certified professional engineer as well as a professional traffic operational engineer in the state of Connecticut. Tonight, I just want to recap a few things or a few changes about these since last month. To start with, as Matt Bruton has mentioned, we have been working with Connecticut DOT OSTA office, and they have reached out to us and suggested to change menus from 154, which is high cube transload and short-term storage warehouse, to let use code 150, which is a general warehouse. What this means is overall, the number of vehicular and truck trips has increased from 1,400 daily to 1,623 daily, and that means that we're up the most conservative that we could be in our assumptions. Second, we estimated number of trips generated by concrete batch plant. So for a plant like this, we estimated that there's, it takes about 15 minutes per truck load to happen. There are three employees at site, so at any given moment, a maximum, there's seven to eight trips per hour during the time. So again, to stay conservative in our assumptions, we assumed five vehicles to the east and 10 vehicles to the west and distributed them across ramps, again, just to stay conservative as much as we could. And last, in our estimate of the operations of the proposed warehouse, we utilized the original distribution where we had vehicles utilizing one driveway and trucks the other. And the reason why we're doing that is to stay most conservative. Again, there's 50% of trucks versus 85% of cars. So by doing so, we're providing the highest volume possible on one of the driveways. And again, with all of these changes, where's, all the intersections in the study area operate at acceptable levels, so we have not reached.
And again, we, we had some discussions leading up to this meeting with your peer review engineer, especially related to traffic, and I'm sure you can hear from him tonight, and hopefully that he's satisfied to the recent changes requested by OSTA and to some of the comments you guys provided to us last time. Up next here is utilities. As I mentioned before, all utilities are available from Plainfield Pike. Some do require extensions to the frontage, but in general, gas, water, sewer, electric are all available. One question from town staff in particular was in regards to coordination with your local WPCA about sewer. We did provide them with expected generations from this facility to make sure that the facilities could handle the addition of this development. They did explain that Plainfield Pike does have service. We would have, we would need to, as I mentioned, extend it to the property. There would be some off-site improvements that would be required to handle this amount of flow, and that has been passed along to us in the applicant, and they understand that there may be some off-site costs associated with that, but services are available and confirmed to be adequate with those improvements to support this proposed development. Lighting plans, obviously, we provided photometric plan as part of the application to make sure that we weren't being a nuisance to any of the butters, and obviously, to provide safe, a secure access for the proposed development. The blue, the pictures you see there obviously show the photometric light in the areas related to the freestanding pools, also the wall backs. Their LED dark sky compliant full cutoff can be adjusted after construction if something maybe isn't operating as, as proposed. So again, it is light trespass only at the two driveways. I'll just highlight those here in here. The intention of that is obviously to, to make sure that there's no dark spots where people are trying to make some critical movements from the road into the site. So we think it's a prudent and conservative avenue to, you know, get people safely on and off the property, but again, there's no light trespass over any other property line towards any other commercial or residential development. Landscaping, obviously, provided a robust landscaping plan to comply with regulations and also to make sure that this is a, you know, beautiful, attractive site for the future tenant or tenants that may be occupying the building. As part of that review, staff did provide some comments related to some improvements they wanted to see, and I'll just move to those quickly. These are two zoom-in snapshots of the entrances onto Plainfield Pike. Staff requested some improvement, you know, landscaping to be added to those entrances to be more attractive and inviting area to the proposed development. So we have on both entrances provided a variety of trees and shrubs that would enhance those areas, but also not limit sight lines for, for trucks or vehicles. The next couple of slides are related to architecture, which we discussed before. Obviously, we had exterior elevations as required as part of the application, but I will, I'll move forward past four plans of the rendering, just so you guys have a better visual again. So again, Plainfield Pike would be in the lower left-hand corner by the, by the laser pointer. You see the entrance here with the concrete batch plant here to remain. As I mentioned before, this is the solar butter to the, to the west. Secondary, secondary entrance, obviously, up on the other side here. So see, obviously, the car parking in the front, trailer, storage, and parking on the west side, east side, and then again, hidden by the building, potential parking for tenant number two towards the rear. This is a rendering somewhere in the parking lot facing the main facade of the building. This is the facade that would be facing Plainfield Pike Road. You see, obviously, we have landscaping and attractive building, retaining walls, show kind of what it looked like during operations. And then, excuse me, a rendering standing in Plainfield Pike looking up the driveway. This is the driveway closest to the concrete batch plant driveway that would face up. This does not include the landscaping that was requested by town staff, just because they didn't want to completely block the view of, of what would be seen. So that's, that view there. And then again, another view from the other driveway more east. As you can tell, obviously, this building is quite set back from the road. There's a lot of landscaping and parking and topography change, so it is not really intrusive to the neighborhood up on the screen. Kind of just in summary here, before we begin to take any questions you guys may have, the property is zoned industrial, so proposed development is appropriate for the site. Kind of warehouse and distribution uses are allowed as of right, don't require a special permit. And as again I mentioned, we, we're not requesting any variances for any of your zoning regulations. We've also worked with planning and engineering staff to make the best possible project, responding to obviously several comments to make sure that we've, you know, made this the best possible project forward, and even leading up to yesterday to make sure we had everything covered before we came here tonight. So obviously, redevelopment of underutilized site, which we hope to spur job creation and economic development. This is consistent with the POCD, the Future Land Use Map, designates this property as POCD also states that town has big industrial land and recommends town attract environmentally conscious companies to this, you know, to this one of these as being the location. Also mentioned environmentally sensitive development. As I mentioned before, we, we did receive weapons approval prior to coming here. As part of that approval, there are weapons and uplift areas that are going to be enhanced through that weapons mitigation plan approved by the inland weapons commission. Applicant obviously made a lot, I think, a great effort to preserve existing landscaping and provide a robust landscaping plan as well. We aren't developing, obviously, the entire 137 acres. Are providing as well related to the environmental aspect of things, stormwater management system that, that complies with regulations. So kind of in closing, Scannell's, you know, looks forward to doing a value member of the community. You see, if they approve this application, we're happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Chuck, if you want to address any engineering comments, items of concern that were addressed, and how, and if there's any outstanding items?
Sure. For the record, Chuck, you can be a town engineer. So the easy one, the traffic, traffic items, the, the traffic comments and discussions that you've been having, those have been addressed. And I, I don't have a written letter for you, but if you do, Chuck, do choose to act on the application, I would suggest for, from the traffic end of things, a condition would be to state that the applicant must come back to the commission if the, the warehouse use or the parking use changes, so the new traffic study can be conducted. This is mainly because there's, there's many different types of warehouse uses, and they have different distribution of traffic flows. So, you know, while it is understood that this is a conservative use for this type of warehouse activity, a different type of warehousing activity would have different traffic flows. For the rest of the, the engineering comments, unfortunately, I was on vacation last week when we received revised plan. I really, I really did my best to try and get through everything the last couple of days, and Matt and I have had several conversations and meetings and that sort of thing, but I did not have a chance to get fully through the plans. I know that many of the comments have been addressed, and there's also some new developments, you know, things like the sewer and that sort of thing that having, there, there aren't full plans for that yet to be reviewed by staff. So if you have specific questions or concerns, you know, many of my comments were technical in nature, but some of those comments really could impact some of the design features. And again, I apologize. I, yeah, I really did try to get through everything today, but...
And of course, this is for possible tenants. We don't have a tenant. This is for possible uses. This is not for the use, which I'm assuming would also change some of the sewer information depending on what it is being used for.
So warehouse use is a specific use code in Connecticut Department of Public Health. So warehouse use for sewers generated by a number of employees. So whether it's tenant one or tenant two or tenant A, B, or C, they're all classified as, as warehouse. So in general, the, the discharge that we provided to WPCA is consistent with the use that we're asking you guys to approve here. Obviously, there could be something dramatically different, but the goal is obviously to, to work with WPCA on finalizing plans and possible improvements to their pump station if, if that's needed, and we will go that route with the right hand side.
On the map, could you just look at the back end of the property, and what is the space between the back property and the, there's a neighborhood back there. So what is the space between, and what is the buffer vegetation zone back there?
Just to make sure I'm clarifying, you, are you talking about from where the laser pointer is now towards the right-hand side?
Yes.
Okay. So the closest lot, just to keep you in context, I have to maybe find that direct number for you. The closest is Colonial, which is down this lower corner here. So from the limited disturbance, we have 360 feet. There is another neighborhood that's just cut off here. That's roughly where the laser pointer is. That's a high and low drive. That's 698 feet, give or take. And the building, as I mentioned, is over 500 feet from Plainfield Pike, so that gives you that context. So there's obviously several hundred feet between the back of this building and I believe down road is the closest one off the screen here. So, and just to point out too, just because I didn't really hang on it in discussions, there's obviously significant wetlands that are across the back here. So I'll just trace that real quick. There's a wetland right here. There's a weapons pocket right here. And then all of this here is a weapon. So as part of that inland weapons application, we are not, any, propose any direct weapon impacts. Any of those weapons of that vegetative buffer, not only are we not touching, but it's going to stay there because obviously it's a very environmentally sensitive area, and we are proposing obviously landscaping and retainment, things of that nature on the development portion.
Is it wooded on the backside, or is it more like marsh?
I believe it is all wooded, so there's no, like, direct sightline from down road to, to the, where area that we're proposing to clear.
If you had to estimate weight of trees in that area, would you be able to do that for me?
I probably couldn't, but... I probably couldn't, but...
So on a team, have knowledge of the height of the wooded area?
Seventy-five, eighty feet, and it's this thick. And it's been, it was probably long twenty-five years ago, thirty years ago, so it's pretty thick.
And could you just state your name for me?
Ernest Colau.
Thank you. And are those evergreens?
Ah, there's a lot of milk maple, maple trees.
Okay. Has somebody from the team wanted to address that?
I was just going to say that your writer did a pretty good job of showing like the vegetation out in place.
Okay, excellent.
Right, you can see a little bit in the back here. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from O S T A? I know the engineering comments were not completely addressed yet.
I didn't see any generic signage proposed everywhere. Will there be any decorative granite or concrete or, you know, entrance sign? Because you don't have any tenants, I don't expect to see names, but...
Right, yeah, and then I guess the intention would be to have some freestanding sign, whether pylon or monument, but at this time, there's nothing proposed. I don't know if that comes back as an amendment or as a separate application, but, yeah, the goal ones, we have tenants, whether it's one or two, would need to have a sign or identify that as a sign.
And also, regarding the sewer extension, your client is amenable to the off-site improvements and assuming the cost? I mean, that's ranged from one plus to two plus million dollars.
Yep, applicants have been aware, as I was speaking with Stephanie at W P C A, that if we were to go to Plainfield Pike, that the off-site flow from this would obviously require some of those upgrades.
Okay, you say if we were to go to Plainfield Pike?
Yeah.
Alternative?
Alternative that they mentioned to us is potentially go to the rear towards Dallas Road. So, we're asking you to approve of Plainfield Pike if that's what is shown on the plan here.
Okay, so that would be a site plan modification if they have to come back for?
If we were to change it, yes. We are aware of that.
So, under staff comments, suggested conditions of approval, if you choose to act on the application this evening, property lines must be modified per plan and recorded in the land records prior to receiving a zoning permit to construct the site. All engineering review fees to be determined are to be paid within 30 days of billing or prior to the filing of the MyLars, whichever comes first. MyLars of the project are to be filed with the town clerk prior to receiving the zoning permit to construct. Any changes to traffic patterns are to be reviewed and approved by staff as part of the zoning permit to construct. Approvals from O S T A and D O T must be submitted for the file prior to receiving a zoning permit to construct. Per the fire chief's request, additional hydrants are required at a maximum distance of 250 feet between hydrants surrounding the building. On the north and south ends of the building, in the parking islands, hydrants are to be a minimum distance of 90 feet from the building. On the east and west sides, hydrants are to be at least 100 feet from the building, with a maximum distance of 200 feet from the building. Connection to the Plainfield Pike sewer main will require significant upgrades to the system. The applicant will be responsible for the cost of the upgrades. And then, also, town engineer suggested that if the warehouse use changes, that a traffic, traffic plan be resubmitted. Traffic study be resubmitted. Any other? Yes?
If I'm not mistaken, the towns engineer was concerned with sewer, the sewer review?
Correct?
Yes, I mean, I would like to be involved in that.
So with the condition of approval as read, would that be sufficient for what your input would be? Or would that be something that would have to be done prior to approval of an application?
No, I think, I think that that would be acceptable and suitable. I would ask that, you know, any, that we still have a chance to go back and forth and, you know, make some technical modifications if required.
Okay, so the condition that states connection to Plainfield Pike sewer main will require significant upgrades to the system. The applicant will be responsible for the cost of any upgrades and coordination with town engineer.
And addition of any technical modifications on the site plan.
Okay, and any technical modifications on the site plan. Okay. Any other comments, questions from board members?
I have a question. Can you try to answer it? What's the change in the level of service on the I-395 off-ramps where they need 14A?
Can you go on a second?
I'm sure I'll be able to do this.
That's the one. Oh, I'll think about that. So this slide shows a summary of the worst movements of each of the intersections. None of the intersections are signalized. They're all stop-controlled. So the two off-ramps actually do show a level of service E for left turn movements. However, we are abid, can you switch to the next one? We are abid by Connecticut D O T to code them as they are signed. And both ramps are signed as one single lane leading the ramp. And in reality, this is how they operate. They're actually operating as two lanes coming out. So as such, if we go back, if we code it as 25 feet long left turn lane, the traffic overall improves from level of service E to B, and that's the natural outcome of those ones.
So what's the typical plane time at the intersection under those worst case scenarios?
It's, so with level of service E N F, you're looking at over a minute. And with level of service B N C, you're looking at half a minute at most.
And you say E N F?
Right, there's only E. I'm just saying the worst worst case scenario is anything E N F, it's over a minute.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can't see it.
Yeah, there's no F.
Okay, that's good.
Any other comments, questions, points of clarification from board members or staff?
Just one point. As this project exceeds 400,000 square feet, the area, the commission must set a time limit for completion, not less than five years, not more than 10 years. Any time limit less than 10 years, it may be extended to the full 10 years. So I recommend simply approving it as for 10 years.
Question, with this five-year approval, would the applicant have to come back at the five-year mark to discuss why it hadn't been completed or?
If you set it for five years, then you come back for extension, another five years.
So at that extension, what would be like the criteria to extend the other five years?
A separate request.
Okay, so it's not like a presentation, it's not, it's just simply requesting more time?
You can require a presentation, but basically, you show up just with a request to extend.
Any other feedback input on that item from board members or staff? Okay. Anything else? Okay, hearing none. I would entertain a motion on the application. And for the member making the motion, if you wanted to include all the conditions, you can say as read into the record. And if you wanted to propose a time limit, remember, it can, not less than five, not more than 10. So in your motion, you should also include that time limit. So do I have a motion? And, of course, the commission always has the right to continue if you feel there's not sufficient information to proceed with unapproval with conditions. But I do think that conditions address any of the outstanding issues. Would staff concur with that?
Yes.
Would you concur with that?
I haven't had a chance to fully review it.
Okay, understood. Would you carry on?
Well, if he hasn't had a chance to fully review the revised plans, I'd be a little concerned.
Okay. So, board members, if you feel you have sufficient information to full comments from the engineer, then a continuance would be advised.
I would like to hear the full.
Make your motion, ma'am.
I'll make motion to continue.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion from Ross to continue, so we can get the full comments from the town engineer. I have a second from June, all in favor? I, any opposed? Okay, application is continued. See you next month. All right, moving on to item E, Elvis Real Estate Holdings LLC, requesting site plan approval for a proposed automotive sales and service on property located at 28 Main Street, Musa, Assessor's Map 2M, Lot 66, Lot 4, C2 zoning district, and this was continued from last month. All right, good evening.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Greg LeBaud, a licensed land surveyor. I'm with Killian Engineering Associates, who replace a business at 114 West Con Road in De Anderson. I do have plans that I can pass out. So the property is located at 28 Main Street in Musa. This is the former Bank of America building. We were before the board back in 2018, and we approved this as a contractor storage building. At that time, it existed. After that approval, the building was torn down and a new building was put in place, but it was never finished. So it's been in a state of incompleteness for a bit of time. We now have a new owner, Elvis Rodriguez, who is the Elvis Real Estate Holdings LLC. He's the owner. We're coming back before the board for a site plan review. And his proposal is for automobile sales and service. We did go before C B A and Plainfield's, part of the zoning board appeals.
Gentlemen, if you could take your conversation outside. Voices carried. Thank you.
Part of the zoning board appeals in Plainfield, they approve the site license location for dealerships as kind of an arm of the Department of Motor Vehicles. We did get that approval last week on the 7th, I believe it was. On the 7th, that was granted. That's why we couldn't come before you last month, but there was a cancellation in their meetings. But, so we're here with this application. Again, it's going to be a general repair garage. He really is going to kind of do the oil changes, brakes, tune-ups, things of that nature. He doesn't propose to do any tires. He doesn't propose to do any engine swapping. That's kind of not what he does. We are encompassing the existing parcel. It is mostly pavement. We are going to be utilizing the existing building. We do have a facility floor plan that's shown on here that kind of shows there are two overhead doors in the front of the building that will be part of the service bay. And there's also another one off to the side of the building, which would be the north side of the building. That would also be one of the service bays. There would be a lobby in the front section with a door. And then, that section of the building above the lobby is two-story. The above section would be an office, and we have a little section of that shown there. It also shows what would be happening inside the building, where we have our waste oil retention. Those are things that are required by D M V that we show on their plans. He would be employing two employees that would work on-site running the service shop. The site is paved, and we are falling inside that existing paved area. Part of the last development, they did put down millings. And I knew one of Ryan's comments was, we want to see those millings pulled up and pushed to pavement. So we do have a note on the plan that the millings in those areas will be turned to pavement. The other, one of Ryan's comments was the handicap spot that was placed on some of those millings or on some of that pavement. They were too steep for the A D A requirements. So we show that that area is to be regraded. We have a note of that. We actually show proposed spot grades so that we can comply with that requirement and bring it so that they can come in the concrete ramp that's in front of the building and then into the building for A D A service. We do have our parking calculations. We are providing, I think we're required to have six spaces. So we're providing, I'm sorry, eight spaces. We have six in the back. And then, we have two on the side of the building. And one of those spaces is devoted as a handicap space with striping and signage that would go with that. There's an existing fence goes along what would be the southwest portion and then the southeast portion of the property. That's an existing fence up against the Musa River. The northeast side is a current, are providing hedge that screens that. We are proposing one fencing off to the northwest side in the front of the building. So that would be, just to screen it from the building next door and the laneway that's there.
I think that's already exist.
Is that one in? Okay.
And I was going to say, we're taking fencing as a?
It says existing. My apologies. I saw it.
So it's gap-in fencing or?
It's, it says that it is a chain link. He's correct. I was looking at the line type that we use, and it doesn't actually exist anymore. There is an existing, or there is a proposed screened dumpster area in the back. That would be 10 by 12, and that would also be screened. We have the details for that. We also mark out where we would have vehicle display areas, areas where even the parked used cars that would be for sale. I think one of Ryan's other comments was to provide some sort of landscaping along the existing sidewalk up front. So we expect some low-growing landscaping, just so that we're not hiding his cars that are for sale or the facade of his building. And there's also a proposed island that was part of the original application that wasn't constructed yet. So we're showing that that island near the entrance would be constructed. Also, a stop bar and a stop sign. We're served by municipal sewer and water. I think the water line is already in. The gas line is already in. I think the sewer line is brought onto the property, but it's not finished, connected up. So we do have a note just stating that the contractor would work with W P C A to finalize the connection for the sewer line into the building.
Greg, I think what's shown as the water line is actually the sewer line.
This one here?
Yeah, unless they run the same area.
There was something dug up over here that was green. That's what was...
Yeah, I know, I know that sewer does run out right about where the water is shown, because we've marked on that for a while.
Okay, so, and I know it's kind of in that incomplete stage, so...
Yeah, the sewer line runs about to the property line. It's broken somewhere under the sidewalk, and the W P C A is working on it.
Okay, so that's why, so that's why it might be dug up, okay. And I think the only other things would be signage. We are proposing a wall sign mounted, 50 square feet is the max that is allowed. I think he actually told me on the phone, it would actually be a little bit less than that, his wall sign that he's proposing. But that's the only signage that he's proposing on. So it would be underneath your required regulations. I think that's kind of it. I would just turn it over to the commission if you have any specific questions on the application.
Okay, any questions or points of clarification from staff on the site plan?
No, I think I've covered everything.
Okay, Chuck?
Could you ask the applicant to go through the stormwater of the site?
Sure, stormwater on the site, please.
Okay, yep. So, again, it's the existing pavement. We are just utilizing what was existing for there. Right now, the site does go to the back of the property, hits curb, and then I think it flows off-site as it presently does. There are no catch bases proposed, which is kind of utilizing the existing areas that were there before.
But it's currently asphalt millings in most of the areas. Is that right?
Right, exactly.
So if you're changing it to vituminous pavement?
But it was pavement before, when it was the bank, and it was approved that way, which, they put down asphalt millings kind of temporarily. So this is what was approved on the last site plan, which is kind of going back to the pavement that was there.
And just to add, that where the asphalt buildings are, that's where the building previously was located. So it's all pervious.
Right, and it's kind of up against this existing building. So it was impervious before.
The previous site plan that, where this building was actually constructed, was already approved with asphalt.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
My, my question was really more in that water quality as opposed to impervious area that impacts? Because you're switching from a...
Storage unit to automotive?
To automotive, which is considered a lame use of higher potential load.
Because it's not just sales, it's also surface. So that would be oil changes, fluid changes?
Which take place indoors, but, again, that was not looked at for this application.
So inside, they would have to have something to catch fluids or?
There's no drains.
There's no drains proposed, correct. It would just be what they drop, they would clean up, basically, on their floors.
Do you have additional comment or question?
That is considered a lame use of higher potential load.
So there'd have to be a plan of what to do or how to dispose or?
Well, for instance, if you have a vehicle that needs to be repaired, it gets dropped off the night before, puts oil onto the ground. The next morning, they bring it into the garage to repair it. What happens to the oil that's left in the parking lot? This sort of thing. That's why the DEP considers this type of use to be potentially higher potential load.
And I think we've required, if memory serves, because we've had a lot of automotive service and sales, even with the sales, with the used sales, used car sales, I believe we had required something for that possibility. So even though the intention may be to keep everything inside a building, there's always that potential that something outside the building would have a leak that would have to be addressed. What would be the minimum requirement for? I can't remember the, like, a stop, was that what?
Well, the problem you have with this site is that there are no catch basins. There's no formal drainage system. The stormwater she flows off-site on the parking lot.
Want that to flow off the site.
And we couldn't put it into the ground. We would have to do something to that. And I'm sure Norm, the engineer for my office, would have to work about some plan, sort of plan, but if we're, we would need a discharge point, I guess, is kind of what I'm thinking.
Do you have a comment, John?
Yeah, he's right. You would need a discharge.
And if you do that, then we're looking at going towards Waddles as well, and then back to Waddles for that that change.
Put a basin in, some kind of storm.
Storm scepter, right, exactly, right. But the problem is, is if we start doing anything outside of the paved areas, the only place to discharge would be directly into the Musa River.
Right, right.
So then we would have to go and we would be required to go to Waddles prior before you could move that.
So one of the difficulties of this site is what you can see in the lighter green. That's all you have for level area. The darker green toward the river is a drop-off.
Right.
So it is really nowhere you can put any sort of infiltration basins or or all the basins in the same. It'll have to be subterranean.
Which I don't think they would allow. Well, I guess with...
Well, I guess we need a subterranean discharge. I mean, you're...
We'd have to have an area to discharge it out, correct.
But I think it'd probably be prudent to require something. I don't think we could just let it cheap flow.
Especially because it's going out of adjacent property.
The river.
Right.
And the river.
Yeah.
I guess it's something, I mean, if we need to see something, I think it would be something that Norm maybe could hash out with Chuck on this. I know I didn't get forward to him, my staff, but I mean, certainly something that they could reach out and maybe they...
Just because I know past practice with every other automotive has been to make sure there's something in that eventuality. So I would recommend that we continue to continue this application so that those modifications and technicalities can be worked out with the town engineer. So if the board is minimal to that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by John to continue, second by June. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Application is continued. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Would you have an extension?
Yeah, I'll see if you want, yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The last application before we get on to the business, the Skinnell application also requires an extension. Tonight is night 63. It was received in April.
Got it.
So they have submitted an extension. Skinnell Properties, number 639 LLC, hereby granting maximum extension of time to consider its application to site plan approval at 91105, 107, 113, and 143 to 153 on Plainfield Pike Road. Skinnell Properties, number 639 LLC, by Edward Seale, its authorized agent. Now, the maximum extension is 65 days, which brings it to August 9th, August 18th. The closest meeting date is August 9th.
Okay.
So the commission would need to act to accept this extension.
Okay, so entertain a motion to accept the extension. Motion by Ross, second by John. All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Carrying none. Extension is approved. For the extension for this application, would that be at the next meeting? Ryan? Because are we at the time for this one as well? So would the applicant submit before our next meeting?
Yes, if it's the time period.
Okay, so then we'll be covered on that one as well?
Commission needs to act on the extension before the time period runs out.
For this one here?
If the time period's going to run out before the next meeting, yeah.
Do you know where we are on the time period for that one?
Probably around 60 days.
Right, but that's 30 days from now. So if we're already at day 60. But they haven't submitted an extension, so we can't, we can't approve an extension. So what happens if the extension is not approved at the time when the next meeting comes?
This is a site plan only, so it's automatically approved.
You think you're going to get an extension tomorrow?
Yeah.
So we would have to have a special meeting to approve the extension? I don't think we can, because there's no extension to...
You might schedule a special meeting for next week.
To approve the extension.
To act on the extension.
To act, okay. Okay, well, we'll make sure we have...
Four.
Yeah, we'll make sure we have four on that. Because wasn't that submitted after? So we should have one more month if it was submitted in May? So it was submitted in May, it was continued to now, so we should be within the 65-day window at our next meeting. Okay. Trust, but verify?
Right. It's usually before 14th. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. It's usually before 10th.
Okay, all right. So it's based on when we receive it at meeting, right? Okay, so we're good on that one. All right, so no special meeting, guys. We're good on that one. So a regular meeting. All right, moving on to new business. Z 2021, 2095 McDonald's Corporation requesting site plan modification to previously approved application. 796 Norwich Road, Assessors Map 17, Map 13A, Block 1A.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm just thrilled with the caller. It's Kelly Bonnberger, Representative of House Corporation. This plan, Kelly, and my, our colleague Matt Tyler got this approved last year to do the double drive-through. And that work was performed and completed. And it was determined after the, before it left the site into the drainage system in Lake River Road, and ultimately to a point source discharge further down the south side. So we had a discussion with Mr. Eaton about the fact that, given the draw, that we have drywells on site, you're not effectively getting pre-treatment before the stormwater goes into the, infiltrates into the ground. And it was requested that we come before you to determine if this requires a site plan modification. And in, from my perspective, as a professional engineer, the drywell that you see on the left, on the right side of your, the hand out there, is actually a when, it's an excellent compact development stormwater quality measure because it really, it puts the stormwater back in the ground, and any pollutants that stormwater may be carrying really gets treated in the edge of the drywell in that, in that, basically, the stone earth transition point there. And it provides really good first flush treatment as opposed to a system that would, you know, in a storm overflowing and go up to that point source. So we proposed that in lieu of the hyperworks, would, that we would put a, basically, a hooded outlet on the existing drywell, take advantage of the fact that that drywell can treat the first flush, and add a, basically, a squid oil absorbent boom in that structure to capture any oils that can be replaced annually. We resubmitted an operation maintenance plan with this to really address the change for the approved plan. And we propose that no, that just, we clean out the drywell and add the skimmer squid and the hood to that existing drywell. We are here to see if you concur.
So just looking at the map, are there three areas where the drywells currently exist?
Yes.
Okay, so you'd be proposing, you're right. So you'd be proposing all three would be converted to this storm drain skimmer squid, rather than?
It would be a combination of, instead of doing the hyperworks, we would, a combination of hooded outlet, capture a large debris, and a, and the skimmer squid to catch any residual oils from the fact that we're doing a drive-through and a car comes through and is dripping oil.
Chuck?
Oh, Madam Chair, I just want to clarify that the two catch basins to the south are drywells, and the basin to the, we'll say, north is a catch basin.
Like normal, regular catch basin?
Without a deep sum.
So, I know we have those regulations with the state. Are they impacted by the state rules?
So this application is a redevelopment, so you provide your stormwater treatment to the maximum amount practicable. They are not increasing impervious areas, so you don't need to worry about peak flow increases or anything like that. It's really just a water quality impact, which they are addressing through these modifications.
We weren't doing any stormwater structure improvements, no new structures replaced. It was really just kind of how can we retrofit the existing facilities the best way possible.
So in your opinion, would the proposed meet the requirements of the site?
Yes.
Yes.
I do just have one comment. I do have your revised plan set. And I thought we had discussed adding the operation maintenance plan to it to address these as opposed to the hyperwork system, and I didn't see that on here.
Correct, it was submitted as a separate document.
Okay, because typically we have those as the, you know, as part of the plan set. That's something that...
We typically, like, because it's a, it's a kind of a guidebook, meant to be a manual, we don't recruit the pages on the plan set. Can't be done with a book, but typically with an approval, you attach just like a...
So would there just be a notation on the plan that addresses a separate document?
Typically, what is done is the, you know, if it's an entire manual, not a whole manual, the operation maintenance plan of what the owner needs to follow, you know, you clean it out once a year.
So just the basic outline of what the...
So that when, if there's an issue, the plan set is, you know, like, okay, well, we approved plan set. And if there's, that's...
So essentially, the landscape plan would be a block. That would be the maintenance schedule.
We can add that.
So for board members, if considering approval, I would just ask in your motion that you add the maintenance block to the back. Yep.
On these drywells, do they include, you know, all the way to the bottom of the structure?
Yeah, as far as we can tell, it's like a typical free catch drywell, which has flat bottoms and then perforations in the full depth all the way down the side.
Well, what happened in the event of, you know, let's say, a saddle deck or something like that?
What kind of tank?
A saddle deck or a truck?
Yeah. In that instance, you have a situation where you have an environmental concern. And if, the difference between a catch basin is that if it's during a storm event and it's flowing out, you'd have the potential of your fluids getting into the storm system and including in the receiving water that it receives. In this case, you'd end up with a, the pollution in the limit here, and that can be addressed if, you know, a severe spill, you know, tens of gallons or more, you'd have a, you know, probably pull that, in an emergency situation, pull that pull that drywell and excavate any impacted soil.
Definitely get digging up the car.
Yeah, which, you know, if it's 100 gallons and a sump gets, and it fills, it goes to point source, it might be chasing it down a stream.
I might suggest that because of the potential to contaminate groundwater from spill, that maybe they should have, you know, some spill kits on the site that they could cover the inlet that you end up with spill, like, tend to mitigate.
If, like, if there was a spill, if it was a slow leak and the truck was not movable, then that could work. I feel like those are catastrophic, you know, where you have something breaks and it's down past that. You're not gonna, you can't keep a spill mat over, you know. This is not a fuel station either, it's just a McDonald's drive-through, you know.
Truck having something off to the side that, in the event, and I've seen trucks go onto a site with the fuel post blown off, completely fuel all over the place.
Yeah, because John, you're talking about with a gas station where you have trained personnel. These are McDonald's.
This is a McDonald's, yeah. It's not a fueling facility.
But if you have nothing there at all, I mean, you can train somebody, you go out and throw them out of a a catch basin. They're not going to. You're not going to have anybody in McDonald's and they're like, oh, there's a spill, let's go, let's go throw this over. It's not going to work. Look at that, you can call clean hardware.
That's, you know, in a catastrophic situation, that's what has to happen. You have to, you know, if there's a spill, the documented spill of, like, what's the threshold that requires the notification? You sort of five gallons, right?
I think so, yes.
So the DEP would be on-site managing, might have a mediation company at their direction in that case. And that's where we figure, you know, a five gallons spill, it's actually a, you know, with a skimmer like this, it can capture some of it, and it's not, you know, a drywell does pretty well as a filtering device, keeping pollutants in the immediate surroundings of the drywell and not, you know, heading down into rivers.
But it happens.
Any other comments on this application?
The skimmer squid, do you have to replace it every so, every so often?
Yes. That would be on the O, that's in the O N F, anyone?
Okay.
And that'll be what's mentioned in the maintenance block on the plans? Yep, yep. Any other comments from staff or engineer?
No, I can just reiterate that, you know, this is a redevelopment, and the applicant's providing water quality measures that are considered practicable. And, you know, by providing the boom and the hood, these are gonna, these are gonna provide protection so that any, you know, if you do have any sort of a spill or any issue, or even any general parking lot contaminants, those would get trapped with these types of things, and, you know, give an opportunity for DEP or Clean Harbors or whomever to respond if you did have a catastrophic spill. So, you know, I think going above and beyond that is, in my opinion, this type of application is kind of going beyond what would typically be required.
All right, I don't see that there are any conditions for approval, so it would be, the motion would be as presented. Oh, was there something?
Just to add the.
Oh, add the maintenance block, I'm sorry. The maintenance schedule block. So there is one condition of approval, so if you were to make a motion to approve, the request is that the applicant would add a maintenance schedule block to the plan.
I agree with that motion.
All right, I have a motion by June to approve with the condition of adding the maintenance schedule block to the plan. I have a second by Kevin, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And I have one abstention. So four in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, the application is approved with that condition.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item B. Discussion of potential moratorium pertaining to cannabis covering all uses as stated in Public Act number twenty-one dash one. So staff suggested, I agree, it may be, it may behoove us to have a potential moratorium while the legislation is getting ironed out.
Well, this would be while we develop regulations.
Okay. So the legislation is there, so now it's the town that has to make regulations based on the Public Act.
Correct, so I would suggest that in our favor of a moratorium, we would propose a six-month course. We must schedule this for public hearing. Well, we have the scheduled discussion for, topic for public hearing.
Okay, so if the public wants to either support or oppose the moratorium, they can do so at the public hearing. All right, so I will entertain a motion to schedule to public hearing at our next regular meeting, are there any notices that need to go out to other towns we have to be aware of? Will it be within the timeframe for the July meeting, or should it be an August meeting that this is scheduled?
No, this is a moratorium, this is how I text them.
So we're okay to schedule for July? Okay, so I'll entertain that motion to schedule public hearing for discussion of moratorium in July. I have a motion by John, second by Ross, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay, scheduled to public hearing. All right. Review and act on the minutes of the May tenth and May thirty-first. Did anyone have any modifications or changes to the meeting minutes? Yeah, they were. I didn't have any changes. All right, so hearing no amendments or changes, I'll entertain a motion to accept both the May tenth and May thirty-first meeting.
I'll make that.
I have a motion by June.
Second.
Second by Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Moving on to item seven, correspondence.
We have one item of correspondence. Getting in with the town of Brooklyn, there is a special permit application for a sand gravel operation at five thirty Oregon Road, and this is an existing sand gravel operation. Public hearing has been set for Wednesday, July sixth, at the Clifford Degrees Water Center.
A report from zoning enforcement.
Okay, I have no report tonight, and nothing to add since.
Make your decision, okay. A report from planning and engineering.
The only new thing, planning and development?
It says planning and engineering, so we will fix that for.
I received notification from Northeast Site Solutions that it submitted an application to the Siting Council for modification of an existing cell tower up at three eighty-eight Morish Road, which is the, at the top of Hopkins Hill. What they're proposing is to add three five G antennas and six remote radio units at a hundred twenty-five feet. The tower is currently a hundred fifty-eight feet tall, so it's not going to be impacting, you know, or adding any kind of height, and I did review the plans, and there's no adverse impact. Regarding the Shepherd Hill Elementary School pedestrian safety improvement, I've been working with the, the Brookwood laminating because the engineering design requires three temporary easements for grading and access on Brookwood property. The engineer for Brookwood said that he's reviewed the plan, we had a discussion, and the easement areas are very minor in nature, so they only needed, need to get approved by their council before we can move forward with that. So right now, I'm just waiting to hear that the language is okay from their council. Interroyal site brownfield grant, the phase one environmental site assessment has been completed, the quality assurance project plan is done, scoping level ERA is complete, as well as the hazardous building materials assessment. I met with Tai Yvonne, who was the town's consultant on this project, at length this morning to discuss next steps going forward. We're going to be having a market study done. They, eventually, hopefully by August, we'll have an A two so that they can safely get in. I have one.
I'm sure you do, but. Come in.
Yep. Eastern Connecticut Land Bank got a two hundred thousand dollar assessment grant for that property. The land bank is currently finalizing the assistance agreement with DECD. Once that document is signed off by all necessary parties, they'll be putting out an RFP for consulting to do the assessment work over there, not just on the command site proper, but also their ten other, eleven other sites, ten other sites, plus the Keystone Cleaners property.
Eleven other sites in that area?
Well, it's the key, the big command property. Command also, almost ten other properties in that area. And so that's included in this area-wide assessment grant, plus the Keystone Cleaners. Because the phase one has been done on the Keystone Cleaner site, and the phase one resulted in recommendation of phase two being up, which Moose Fire Department paid for the phase one, and they don't have the funds to pay for the phase two, so that's included in this.
All right, and I didn't see anything for other, so hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Motion by Ross, second by John, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.